Education will come to order. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, legal, property acquisition issues, Article 24, Section 4 dash 210A, 1, 5, 8, and 11.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. The board will now enter into executive session. Again. Board of Education will reconvene at this time, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please turn off your cell phones if you haven't done so already, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Board reports, Peter, we'll start with you tonight.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to, from a board report, talk about some events I've been going to. First, I went to the All County Chorus Concert that was held at Chopticon High School last week. It was the Great Mills, Chopticon, and Leonard Towns chorus groups singing, it was a great performance. I know Dr. Mariano and Ms. Washington were there as well, and it was a great performance to see all three schools there as well. Next, I also want to talk about a new bullying statistic study that came out by Michigan State University for 2013. This came out with a lot of bullying factors that occurred in schools across the nation, and the factors go from a range of talking about percentage of students who get bullied in schools, the actual percentage, as well as the percentage of people of a certain race that get bullied, as well as age that goes into that. And something that really, I caught from this, was the percentage of, by grade, of kids who were bullied, and from sixth grade to 12th grade is the index, and it goes from thirty-nine point four percent in sixth grade to about twenty-point-four percent up to 12th grade. And that was a dramatic decrease in the level of grades through that, but thirty-nine percent, about forty percent of students in the sixth grade being bullied is a very, very large number. And this is a national statistic as well, and to say for forty percent who get bullied and sixty percent who are not bullied, who are either the bully or bystanders, that's just too far of a number for the millions of kids that we have in the nation, the millions of students that are being bullied. So, and it's, the good side is to see that the number does go down by half, fifty percent, going up through 12th grade. That is a good thing that was brought to this, but forty percent is far too large a number to have for the nation of, and this is why I like to bring back the bullying topic every single week and every board meeting we have, because forty percent is a very, very large number for the millions of students that we have in the nation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Peter. Mrs. Crosby.
I attended grandparents' day, even though it's hard to believe I'm a grandparent, at Evergreen Elementary School today. It was absolutely wonderful. I was with my little Josie, she's eight years old. Today's activity was math, using either your brain or a calculator, and I had to play the activity. Well, it seems as though my brain works better, believe it or not, than a calculator, and she said I had to go home and practice using a calculator instead of my brain. Anyway, we also worked on geometric shapes using toothpicks and marshmallows, and you got to eat the marshmallows. They also had the holiday shop, which I was at last year, they usually break me there, I mean money-wise. There was a line like you just wouldn't believe, they have so many nice, nice things there. It was about, for us to get from where we were in line up to where we paid was about forty-five minutes, so I sent her back to class with somebody to watch her, and I stayed in line. By the time I found her in the cafeteria eating lunch, lunch was over, and she said, they call me Miki, that's my nickname, for those that know, it's just another story. Miki, go to Burger King. So, anyway, I didn't, I came here, and so I had a wonderful, wonderful time. And she said she wanted to buy something for Dr. Mariano.
Nice.
Yes.
Very nice. I did not know that, thank you.
And she bought you something here, because she knows you like music.
I do.
Do you want to pass it, or I can stumble down there?
Oh, my goodness. Wow. Life is full of surprises this evening.
You never know, do you?
I do not. Oh, my goodness, another tie.
And we got it at the, we got it at the holiday shop.
At the holiday shop.
And it's handmade.
It is handmade, and it's got a guitar on there, and I am going to be breaking that out here over the holidays, and life will be good. That's wonderful, thank you very much. This is from Josie?
Yes.
I've got pictures of her, she's adorable.
Yes.
Tell her so much thank you, and that's wonderful, very much appreciated. Wow, didn't expect that as I was preparing for my report. Very nice, thank you, very nice.
I'll tell her you said that.
Very appreciated.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Mr. Matthews.
Never reported this week, sir, been working hard.
Okay, Mrs. Washington.
Thank you, Dr. Raspa. Our students are privileged to have many outstanding speakers from the community, to be keynote speakers at special events throughout the school year. One such speaker was Ms. Cindy Brawls, retired Senior Vice President of Booze Allen Hamilton. Ms. Brawls spoke at the induction ceremony for the National Technical Honor Society at the James A. Forrest Korean Technology Center on Friday, February 15th. Before I tell you about her speech, I would like for you to know, in order to be considered for the National Technical Honor Society, a student must have maintained a cumulative grade point average of three-point-two and demonstrated service, leadership, and character. The students must, all, all the students must keep up the standards to remain a member. Fifty-seven students from the Forrest Center were inducted, congratulations to all the students. Ms. Brawls gave an outstanding speech with excellent advice for our students. Here's some of her advice, and I think this advice is applicable to adults as well. Remember that life goes by in a blink, don't wink. Realize that a career is a marathon, not a sprint. Use your differences as your strengths. Employ hard work, perseverance, and personal drive. Success is personal, not everyone has the same ideals. Your model of success can change over time because you will have different desires. Be willing to change, be good at your craft, be the expert. Intellectual curiosity is important. This is your career, take charge of it, don't be average, excel. Break away from people who want to be average, you may lose friends along the way. Keep setting and resetting the bar, keep it high, challenge yourself way above you. Learn to fail and get back up, you will skin your knees. Learn to work when the work is worse and when the challenge is difficult. Stay in the fight, fight the battle, and learn how to fight. You learn when the fight is tough. Figure out what is needed at the top level. Get the right mentor to help you understand what is on the other side and what is needed at the top level. Retool and re-school. Sage advice, take tough feedback. What won't kill you, she said, will make you strong. Discover your weaknesses, ask your supervisor, what would you want me to do differently, instead of asking, what are my weaknesses? Be inspired and like what you do, you don't have to love it every minute of the day. Stay in the community, and stay connected to the Forrest Center, and come back and tell your story. Don't you agree her speech was timely and provided to students with pearls of wisdom that they can use today and every day? A tremendous thanks goes to Mrs. Brawls, retired Senior Vice President of Booze Allen Hamilton. Many thanks go to Mr. Theo Kramer, Executive Director of the College and Career Readiness Center and the James A. Forrest Korean Technology Center, Mrs. Maggie Giles, Assistant Principal, all program teachers, Counselor's Secretary, Hospitality Management, Culinary Arts Program for the refreshment, the TV video production for recording the ceremony, the horticulture for the plants and decorations, the building service workers for the cleanliness and ordinariness of the room, and many other people who made this event a gigantic success. In addition, thanks to the students and the parents for encouraging them to do their best every day. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, as Mrs. Brawls said, life goes by in a blink, don't wink. God bless you, be safe, and enjoy your time with family and loved ones. That's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Allen.
Last night I went to Huntingtown High School. The Maryland State Department of Education and the State Superintendent, Dr. Lowry, have been going to different regions around the state to talk about the implementation of the Common Core standards and the curriculum on which it's based, that is based now on the Common Core standards, to talk about what it is and what it isn't, and especially what it isn't. So, there was a fairly large crowd of individuals, there were people, a few people from Charles County, a few from St. Mary's, but primarily people from Calvert County who were in attendance. It was a very interesting meeting, and I thought the questions that were asked by the audience at the end were especially telling. I'm proud of the fact that here in St. Mary's, when the Common Core standards came out and we understood that, that this would be implemented, that a new curriculum would be implemented within the state of Maryland, Dr. Mariano charged us with forging ahead and doing so with full fidelity to the new curriculum. There were a number of supports put into place, it has not been an easy task, but it was very telling to learn last night that where we have completed that effort, that some of our fellow counties have not done so. And I thought that many of the questions last night reflected the fact that, that the other counties had not done so, so there are just many questions. And I think also that the fact that this is something we've been talking about for several years, and that staff have worked very hard, not only to implement this, but to help parents understand what it means, that we've had a much stronger and smoother rollout than, than certainly some of the other counties have had. So, hats are off to all staff that have been involved, because it truly has been a Herculean effort to basically completely rewrite the curriculum. And, and I appreciate the work that's been done, and I think the fact that our students are performing so well is really a testament to the fact that we have implemented this, and I look, I look forward actually to the day when the park assessments have been tested and fully implemented, because I believe that those tests will demonstrate that we have done a strong rollout of this, of this curriculum, and that our students are well-versed in it when the time comes to start taking those tests, so.
Very good.
Well done for all.
If you wouldn't mind, let me ask you to advance further. At the MAVE Conference in Ocean City, the State Superintendent acknowledged us, you want to talk a little bit about that as one of the only four counties in the state?
She was, she's been hearing a lot around the state about frustrations by teachers and, and from parents, and school systems saying that they had implemented, and she said, I've been in classrooms, I know what the truth is, and she did cite St. Mary's as one of the only four counties in the state to have fully implemented a new, the new curriculum with fidelity. And what is difficult for people to understand, because the terminology is used incorrectly often, there's a belief that there is a national curriculum, that it's a Common Core curriculum, when it's not, it's standards, it's expectations that all of our students should be able to do certain things at various times in the grade, throughout the grades. And so then when it comes to the school system, it's the local school systems that decide how they're going to accomplish, what skills are needed in order to, to implement, to make sure that a student perhaps knows how to write a persuasive argument. And, and so if a teacher decides that there's a particular piece of literature that will help with that, we may be teaching one piece of literature here in St. Mary's that may be completely different than is being taught in Montgomery, and that's perfectly acceptable, and it really is a nod to making sure that the creativity and talents of our teachers, it shines throughout all of the curriculum, and, and I think that is a positive. There's such mobility within the world, and especially this nation, this day and age. There were many problems over the years where a student might, especially in a military community, move from here to Texas or to California, be in the same grade, and yet be exposed to completely different materials, and there's, there's no continuity, and how do we expect students to be able to learn and, and function and be well-prepared for the future if, from one school to the next, one district to the next, they can't be sure about what they're being taught, and so there are going to be huge gaps, and this, these standards are a recognition that we need to make sure that we're, there's more continuity and more alignment in what we're doing and what our, what our students are expected to be able to do.
And of particular importance to us as a community, because as a military community of the eighteen thousand students that we have, sixty-three hundred are associated with the military, so that means there's a lot of movement.
Right.
And that places us in the top twenty-five list of school systems in America, the largest school systems in America, with the largest concentration of military young people. So it really is in our interest to advance this with a high level of fidelity, because more than likely that one in three children are going to be moving through the process during their time in St. Mary's County. So it's very important for us. Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Very interesting meeting last night.
It was. It was.
But that's what's on the agenda these days, and we will deal with it. It's been a busy time. I went to the Farm Bureau presentation as we were there, and I was really amazed at the amount of community support that was there, and the agricultural presentation was phenomenal. And we, in this county, had at one time FFA chapter up at Chopticon High School, some of you in the audience probably remember that years ago. And here we are, 2013, looking at agricultural program over at the Forrest Center and reinstituting the FFA chapter in St. Mary's County. And what's amazing is that people think that agriculture just deals with plant production and taking care of animals. They just don't realize that nine, twenty-three million people in this country work in agricultural-related fields, and ninety-eight percent work in, outside of farming. And right away you say, well, what are these people doing? It's a lot of people. The largest employer in the United States, people work in some form of agricultural situation. Well, there's agricultural production, animal systems, agricultural production, plant systems, food and fiber processing, environmental services, and natural resources management. And this covers all types of engineering, biotechnology, geneticists, and I'm just reading from a brochure that I have here in front of me that was passed out, food engineers, health engineers, some of the areas require more than a bachelor's degree, and the list goes on and on and on, and it's really amazing, and we don't look at that as a population, we just think that people, you know, corn and beans and cows, but it's a lot more than that. And the community support that evening was really great, and it looks like we have a lot of support in St. Mary's County to venture into a program, Dr. Mariano.
Yep.
And this board is on record at the meeting, supporting this, and we will head in that particular, down that particular road and try to put these things together, and we have people from the Maryland Agricultural Education Foundation interested to help us, there's some grant money out there, and it looks like we will proceed, and in time, we will have a program at the Forrest Center.
We're very committed.
Yes, and so, very happy about that, and this board is very happy to have had the opportunity to be involved in this, and of course we have to give Mr. Jamie Rowley, who's the President of the Farm Bureau, for getting behind this and putting it all together and having us all there. So, in the future, you'll be visiting the Forrest Center and maybe going by the Agricultural Department and seeing what our students are doing and getting ready for careers, and of course we always have college and career ready, and that will be part of their college and career readiness program as they proceed through the school system. Thank you very much for that. Dr. Mariano, it's your turn.
I have no report this time. Just joking with you before Thanksgiving. Get comfortable, everybody. We like to have a little humor at it. I told the board if they truly wanted to end their meetings early, it's to limit me to a certain number of minutes to speak.
Start the timer, Mrs. Battle.
Exactly. So, just thought we'd end on a little humor there. Well, first of all, good evening, board. I retract that statement that I said I have no report. Good evening, board members, it's great to see you. Community members, wonderful to see you as well, and delighted to be here this evening. I have a rather large report, but I'll move through it quickly, because there's so much happening, where it's a very busy school system, a very productive school system, and a school system that you know I'm so proud to be a part of, which was quite frankly indicative of the state of the school system address that occurred last week, sponsored in conjunction with the state, with the Chamber of Commerce. And as stated there, there's been several articles written today in The Enterprise and various others. I've stated the school system is strong and vibrant, and talked about all of our data points. It's a very challenging experience for me, because there's so many things to talk about, but have to distill that down to a thirty-five-minute presentation doesn't do it justice. So somebody asked me, they said, when you were speaking, we know you're, you like to, you talk pretty good, and you're fast in terms of your speaking, and pretty quick in terms of your wit, but where is the fire, you know, in that sense, because you were really ramped up that afternoon, and it's very exciting to do, but I'm very pleased with the results and opportunity to take this to the community, and in January we will have another community event that will be a little longer and a more opportunity for engagement and questions from the community, because we want that full level of engagement, a robust communication plan about what we're doing. Your participation in last night's meeting was further evidence of that. There's so many things going on that I need to let you know about that continue to really advance the agenda of our school system. Many of you know about the College Access Program, better known as CAP. I want to give you a real quick summary report of that. For those of you who don't know, it serves juniors and seniors, and they meet weekly in the College and Career Center during lunch periods. The focus is on students who will be for the first time, first-time college, attending college for the first time in their family, but any student is welcome to attend. They have a two-year curriculum, there's actually a curriculum that goes along with this, so students are coming in for that participation, to get information about college, how to really understand the process. The program obviously has been up and running at all three high schools, and need to let you know that we're cobbling together that money through a lot of different sources to make that happen. Staff report at this mid-year process, or the end of the first quarter, I should say, staff report that seniors are better prepared this year for college and career readiness than ever than before, and are in very good shape with applications, testing, SATs, ACTs, and interviews. We're very pleased to hear that. We have been, have an expert revising the curriculum for our juniors, and I want to continue to emphasize that Booze Allen is a very strong partner, and Dr. Mar, if you could make certain we bring Booze Allen in for recognition with their work particularly around CAP, because as you hear from my report, they've done a lot of, a lot of pieces there. Booze Allen sends ambassadors weekly to work with students alongside the college advisors. The ambassadors are young employees of Booze Allen, recently out of school, who share their experience and advice, which is so powerful to make that direct link, and the ambassadors also accompany students on college visits. This is paid for by Booze Allen. They, all these college visits, the trips cost, are paid for by Booze Allen, and we're very pleased about that. CAP staff visits college throughout Virginia, and in October as part of their in-service training, which helps the students find just the right college. Meeting admissions and financial aid officers at colleges proven very useful, as staff advocate for their students, and again, paid for this training by Booze Allen. CAP staff organize and participate in the college nights and the financial nights at their schools, additional to our college fair, I might add. They also had a table at the college fair, and I sat down and talked to all of our advisors in that realm, and they're just so committed. And I want to give a specific shout-out to those individuals who are a part of that. Our college advisors, our CAP advisors are Betsy Toomes at Leonard Town High School, very enthusiastic, Carrie Nance at Chopticon, and Robin Willis, and Tamla Pridgen at Great Mills. They're all part-time except for Robin, who is a full-time college and career liaison at Great Mills, and Betsy and Tamla serve as the tech center coordinator as well. So all those connections to college, I see your head nodding, Peter, have you been a part of some of this as well and taken advantage of the program?
Yes, in fact, last year, my junior year, beginning, I started going to the College Access Career Program, and it, it really opened my eyes into what exactly I could go into, when not just, oh, I have this one option, I could go to maybe a four-year college or just go to CSM for two years and transfer, I have a plethora of options that I can choose from for college education, and not just that, but also learning different things like how to prepare, how to prepare for an SAT, professional development is also a part of that as well, looking for job interviews and building resumes and things like that, making, how to make essays. It was, it's been a great program, and I'm still in it this year as a senior, going every week and learning new things about how to turn in college applications, how to do everything right, and in fact, Ms. Nance, and we also had Ms. White at Chopticon, and they even took time out of their day, came and, my parents came in, they, we all sat down and talked about all my options that I have, and that was just, just great, and I, and it was just a great program to be in, to know that it's not just me and my parents, that kind of not knowing all about the whole college, the whole college package, we have someone else to talk to about it, to help us make decisions.
It's an intimidating process if you don't understand how to navigate that, and so your words of endorsement are very important to me, and symbolically at Great Mills and a few of the other high schools of graduation, the number of participants who, the principal acknowledged asked them to stand up, and we've had a large number of students doing that, and demystifying that college access process is critical. This program is very important, board members, to our college and career readiness process for our students, just another prong in the myriad of things that we've got in tandem moving together. Let me continue to move quickly as I go through this report. This is a very busy season for our Fine Arts Program, I mean, there's programs every night, honors courses, et cetera, but Great Mills, Chopticon, and Leonard Town have had a spectacular fall season. and Leonardtown have had a spectacular fall season. The marching band programs have all completed the U.S. Band Circuit during the fall season. They've traveled all over the area during the season, including trips to West Virginia, Pennsylvania, Maryland, New Jersey. Chopticon High School in Great Mills also hosted their own competitions locally, hosting about six bands at each of their own competitions. Here are just a few of the highlights that I want to share with you. Chopticon High, school, the director is Todd Burrows. The show titled "The Vinci's Vision." The show band of Southern Maryland plays first in all regular season competitions, consistently winning awards for best effects, best visual and best guard. They earned the fifth consecutive Maryland State Championship at the Mid-Atlantic State Championships held at the Naval Academy. The band also earned third place, finished in the highly competitive Group Two Open National Championship held at MetLife Stadium in New Jersey. Give Chopticon High School a round of applause, if you would.[652.23][652.23](applause) Great Mills High School Director, Robert Matier, show title Prometheus, the Fire Bringer, Bringer, I'm saying that right, I do believe. The Great Mills High School band earned their highest-ever ranking at the National Championship held at MetLife Stadium in New Jersey. They finished in the top ten, the highest ranking ever earned by Great Mills High School in the U.S. Band competition history. Their percussion section remained undefeated throughout the regular season. And I don't know if you were, did you see some of the drum competitions at the parade, the Veterans Day Parade? We had our drummers, prior to the parade starting, they were in a drum-off, you know, in a competition. And I love the drum line, one of my favorite movies, loved the percussions, and it was just outstanding to see. The Great Mills High School percussion section was also named Maryland State Champion of the Mid-Atlantic State Championship held at the Naval Academy. Give Great Mills High School a round of applause.[707.54][707.54](applause) Leonardtown High School Director, Stephen Lane, show title Dark Shadows. The Leonardtown High School marching band plays first at four out of five regular season competitions, in which they competed consistently, winning awards for best music, best visual, and best effect. They finished in the top half of the competing bands at both the Mid-Atlantic State Championship held at the Naval Academy and the National Championship held at the J. Bernie Crumb Stadium in Allentown, Pennsylvania. Pretty good stuff. Give Leonardtown High School a round of applause.[738.54][738.54](applause) So, our, the Fine Arts Program is alive and well, and when people say that we're cutting the arts, that's not occurring in St. Mary's County. If anything, we're expanding, as evidenced that I introduced, that we're exploring the possibility, not the possibility, it's going to be a reality, of another pathway model, a fine arts academy at Chopticon High School, which will include a major component that I feel that we're somewhat deficit in, is the teaching of dance. Another way to express the giftedness areas of our young people, and we're trying to advance that as well. I committee planning that, too. Let me continue to move along, lots happening, very excited as always about our school system activities. I had the opportunity with, to go with one of my really good friends, Joe Slater, the CEO of Smeco. He's such a good partner, and we've become good friends professionally and personally. He took me to, for a personal tour during the day of the new operation center. He allowed about an hour for that present, for that tour. Two hours later, I was walking out, because many of the individuals who work there are our parents, who wanted to stop and engage about the performance of our school district, how it's benefiting their children, and we are very proud to have this operation center in Southern Maryland. It can withstand up to, I think, a category-three winds from a hurricane. To have that kind of facility is just phenomenal, and I just wanted to really shout out to the great partnership that we have with Smeco, and their, their major commitment to education in St. Mary's County. As the inclement weather is upon us, the temperature has taken a dip, as you know, I just want our parents to be aware that we will continue to have recess during the winter months. We're very, very cautious about the wind chill conditions, the temperatures, et cetera, and we want our students to dress properly. We've sent out guidance and guidelines to all of our principals regarding that, but I'm a firm believer in terms of fresh air and the benefits of that throughout the winter months as well. So, dress properly, you know, wear your hats and gloves, but we will allow young people to be outside during those cold times, but if the wind chill does dip below freezing, we will keep young people inside, but we want that benefit of always that fresh air as well. I want to also thank individuals for their major contributions to our shoe fund, and that just continues to be an exceptional contribution as well, and I want to acknowledge these individuals. Our shoe fund has become very prolific in the sense that it's making a great impact in our community. I really appreciate our community members for their contributions. If individuals are looking for to make contributions towards the end of the year for tax purposes, this is a wonderful cause, because you know directly the monies are going from your checkbook to the school system to buy shoes directly to a child of need. There's no middle person, that money has been designated, and it's making a tremendous impact in our community. And I thank from the bottom of my heart during this time of Thanksgiving, you know, I'm a great emotional guy, too. I lead with my heart all the time, and I am so thankful for the contributions made to this, because there are so many young people with shoes on their feet right now that would not have them on their feet if it weren't for the shoe fund. And then, you know, and it's, when it's getting cold right now, we have individuals making contributions for hats and gloves and mittens and coats, and all of that's going back into our community. Last night, I was at a flow mentoring program in the Tucked Away in Alcove at Benjamin Banneker, where some parents and kids putting together Thanksgiving meals baskets. That's occurring all across our district. Our young people are all about service in our school district, and our community is just so wonderfully giving. So, I want to thank the ladies of charity at St. Aloysius Church, the Church Without Walls, Mr. and Mrs. Thomas Wild, the Tuxen Presbyterian Church, Mr. and Mrs. David Ruhlman, Ms. Janet Pelley, the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Southern Maryland, the Fifth District Homemakers, Ms. Cheryl Krogan, and Ms. Vicky Malay, and we're going to talk more about Vicky. Vicky won a door prize at a conference recently to the tune of $250, and she's donated that whole amount to the shoe fund as an employee for something that she's one of the kind of individuals we have. And these names will be memorialized on our Wall of Fame over here, and I just thank everybody for their contributions for that. I had the opportunity during this time of Thanksgiving, I always try to get out and experience the work of all of our employees, whether it's with our maintenance folk, our building service, I try to work alongside with them. So, tis the season for the most exciting meal of the year, the Thanksgiving meal. I served lunch at White Marsh Elementary, and Mrs. Crosby, I am so appreciative of this tie, I will wear that, but I also have to show you that what the children at White Marsh gave me, and this is the wonderful tie that I received from the board.[1024.83][1024.83](laughter) So, that is wonderful. I wore that many a day to that day, it was getting in the way as I was distributing the mashed potatoes and gravy, I had probably a couple stains on it from that event, but they define me as the top turkey of the school system. You can take that anywhere you want, in that sense. So, that was fun as well. Yesterday, I met with our, and our entire technology staff. Always want to continue to focus on the process, the products of what's making our vision realized, but always focus on the relationships. And our technology staff, a few of those representatives are in the back row, one of which I can't understand why they let you out of your little room where you do all your work. They're so proficient at what they do, and I thank our technology staff for the great levels of implementation. Is there a leader here? Mr. Jim Corns, you're doing a spectacular job, sir, leading these fine people, and I'm really appreciative of that. So, on this day as before, this is the last board meeting of the month before Thanksgiving, I wish Board members, all of you, a blessed, safe, healthy, happy Thanksgiving. Know that you have one greatly humble and appreciative superintendent who is so thankful to lead this wonderful school system that we call the St. Mary's County Public Schools. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart for that, and for all of the young people that we have in our district who just continue to impress me every day. And I'm going to end with this final piece, which leads me to that wonderful student board member. I've been an educator for a number of years, and I've worked with a lot of boards. I have never seen a student board member get a full-blown article in the newspaper and an editorial.
Yeah.
I mean, you are like a rock star of student board members.
Absolutely.
So, we give you a round of applause, and you represent our students so well, eighteen thousand of them, who I love dearly and led by you, I really appreciate that. So, Dr. Rasputin, not too long, but maybe just a little bit, but I can't contain my enthusiasm and love for this job, so thank you, sir. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, sir.
And to your family as well.
Thank you.
And Dr. Mariano, you will always have a report.[1148.66][1148.66](laughter)
This is true.
And you'll always be our top turkey.[1152.52][1152.52](laughter)
So many names.[1156.02][1156.02](laughter) Head goose, top turkey.[1158.71][1158.71](laughter)
There are no recognitions this evening, there's no public hearing this evening, there'll be no public comment this evening. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
And we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. There are no action items tonight. That brings us right into information items. And the first information item is the Colonial Williamsburg, Burgs Virtual Field Trips, and we have Dr. Marr, Kevin Wright, Ms. Tamara Payne.
And Principal Lisa Botner as well, from Leonardtown Middle, and as they're coming to the podium, I want to thank all of these individuals, as Mrs. Allen was talking about the implementation of the core standards. These individuals represent many individuals who are doing that with fidelity every year, and
Absolutely.
This is the night before their holiday, there is no school tomorrow, and Ms. Payne, we really appreciate you being here this evening, recognizing that before a holiday. Thank you so much. This is an extremely important report, and I'm going to talk further about a community partner who is instrumental in bringing this forward to us, so let's see this in action.
Okay. Well, Board members, Dr. Mariano, we're very, very pleased to be able to offer this. I'm not going to, I have a very little speaking part, just to share my excitement for this extraordinary program. To give a little background, the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation has partnered with Pearson and the community at large to create a series of virtual field trips to provide some great educational resources to students and to teachers to really bring history alive. And we do want to thank a great partner in the community, Mr. Bryson, who has shared some of this information with us, and we're going to say more
Right.
Words about that partnership a little bit later, but about two, three weeks ago, I had an opportunity to visit this in action as the eighth-grade team at Leonardtown Middle School worked to bring a full day of these activities to our students. And the excitement, the enthusiasm was just palpable. And so, I'm going to step to the side so Mr. Wright can share some of the content connections, and then we can hear from Ms. Payne directly to hear about how, how these lessons came to life in her classroom and the classrooms across Leonardtown Middle School. Mr. Wright?
One of the things I want to talk about with the Williamsburg Virtual Field Trip, that it's a great resource in the sense it makes connections, it makes, it makes connections to the curriculum frameworks for the social studies and history standards. One of the things when you're looking at the virtual field trip is that relates to the content standards under the Maryland, when you're looking at social studies with the eighth grade, when you're looking at early American history, as well as, what Tammy is probably going to share, the idea that with the resources, it connects to the Common Core standards, the idea with the primary and secondary sources, which is really emphasized when you're looking at that, looking at those particular literacy standards, as well as Maryland adopted this past June is the, what they call the CE3, which is the College, Career, and Civic Life Social Studies Framework. And one of the things when you're looking at the virtual field trip, that it stresses the idea of compelling questions in the inquiry-based type of learning, as well as the blended learning environment, as well as the literacy standards with the informational text. So, when you're looking at the Williamsburg Foundation from, as an instructional resource, it completely aligns with all three of the standards and curriculum documents that we have to fully implement within the state of Maryland. As you can see, this is a schedule that will be offered through the virtual field trips. For example, in October, which Tammy's going to share with, with the eighth-grade team experienced, and the students experienced, is the Bill of Rights, as well as identified other elements of content standards going to be addressed with the idea of checks and balances, looking at the role of technology with the Civil War, as well, looking at the War of 1812. And one of the things that, when I really highlight with the virtual field trip, is the idea it addresses the different pieces of informational text, the idea of digital media with the primary sources, as well as providing teachers with a framework with, looking at the lesson plans and activities that are very engaging in hands-on aspect of besides where students have to apply the information and looking at increasing student engagement. And one of the things, looking at it myself, and looking at the lesson plan design, is very student-centered. And the other portion is that the idea of emphasizing 21st century learning skills, the idea of getting students on the computers and interacting with the different components, and materially looking at the blogging aspect of it, interacting with students from across the country. And the other thing, one of the mentions that we pollied, looking at polling this year with, at the middle school level, and the reason why I was contemplating with this at the very, when I first introduced with this, is that whether or not to put in fourth or fifth grade, or put in an eighth grade, and decided to go with the eighth grade in particular, because as the eighth-grade team, we're looking at the eighth-grade teachers for U.S. History, they're very dynamic individuals, they have a sense, a lot of creativity, are willing to take risks. And of that group, when you're looking at the eight and nine of the teachers, they're all innovative, and they're willing to apply, taking all three documents together, that's very, that's very skillful, when you're taking the content and you're taking their literacy, and you're taking the technology aspect and blending it all together to create a very dynamic situation for students. So, that's the reason why I picked the middle school, and in particular, the eighth-grade group, because a lot of them also participated in other teaching American history grants over the last three years. So, they had a lot of experience with that elements of it. In addition, teachers had an opportunity, we're looking at the webinars, the idea of getting firsthand experience, working with the Williamsburg Foundation, with the virtual reality field trip, and, and all the technical aspects of it, how to make that smooth transition into the classroom, so that's what the webinar addressed. Now, I'm handing over to Tammy to actually to talk about the details of it and how to implement in the classroom, and one of the things I want to really highlight with Tammy and the eighth-grade team, what I witnessed was the sense of the collaboration that took place. Without the collaboration and without the really, really need to take risk, we're not being successful without that. And that was the key thing that with Tammy in particular, was her ability to go ahead and take the lead, take the leadership role in that aspect. And one of the things when you're looking at all three curriculums, most with the Common Core, was mentioned a little bit earlier, is that Tammy and the eighth-grade team has really embraced the Common Core state standards and taken it own, taking ownership of it. And that's one of the things with a virtual reality field trip, it's a great instructional resource where the teachers can take it to the next level when you're looking at the standards.
Sometimes when you take it to that next level, you just want to panic. You think, oh, my goodness, what am I doing? And we decided we wanted to take a field trip, and we thought, okay, where do we want to go? And the thought of going into Washington, D.C. was there, we had the opportunity, and we said, oh, anybody want to put it together? And I said, no, I don't want to put it together. Said, somebody else want to do it? No. So, our team said, well, let's come up with something that would be fun. And I had been on the instructional, what do we call that? The webinar with them, and the webinar was just so exciting, you couldn't help but go, oh, my goodness, what can I get into? And so, by the time that they're on there, and they kept saying, you know, like, I'd get the little notes in the chat window saying, Mrs. Payne, please come back to the page we're on. And I thought, okay, well, you know, they were catching me trying to get into all the lesson plans and things. So, what I discovered was, how do you make this happen school-wide? Well, it takes buy-in, 100% buy-in from the team. And you could do this as a daily thing, and you could sign up for the computer labs and work it one by one by one by one by one, or we could call it a virtual indoor field trip. So, my entire team of teachers, and at Leonardtown Middle School, we are set up as pure teams, so our team of teachers, my math teacher, my English teachers, my science teacher, my special ed teacher, they all said, yeah, let's do this, this will be a really fun thing to do. And I couldn't believe it, I thought, all right, awesome, this is going to be great. So, then the next idea was, how do we set this up? How do we take care of this? Well, this is where Mr. Corns, thank you, thank you, thank you, was able to get our technology up and running, because the closer we kept getting to this date, the more trouble we kept having, and I thought, oh, no, 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 we can't do this, we have to have this successful. The kids bought it, loved it, and continued to use it. So, how did we work this? For us, it worked out into a master schedule. Isn't that beautiful?[1782.02][1782.02](laughter) Yes, okay. That master schedule took a lot of work, because there were so many activities on the actual site. There are, it's a 26-page lesson plan, and I thought if I hand that to my teachers, they're just going to go, oh... And I thought, if I hand that to my teachers, they're just going to go, oh, I don't know your curriculum here, you do it. So I said, okay, let's take this apart. So I thought, okay, who's good with computers, who's not good with computers? Parts of this, even though it's an online webinar or virtual field trip, part of it doesn't require a computer. So the teachers that weren't comfortable with the computer got the part that didn't have to have the computer, although they were thrilled, thrilled. But every 45 minutes, we move the kids by the bell system in the school through another piece. So for example, if you go all the way to the right, oops, how do I go back? Do, up, okay. All the way to the right is mine. We started with amendments in action. That was a fascinating case. That was four document, or four pages of documents that they had provided with us with actual court cases, and we had to figure out which amendment did those court cases go to. You could do it as a game, you could do it as individuals, you could do it as partners. We decided to break the class into two different teams, and the hardest part was, I said, you pick your teams. And everybody has to be on a team, you have 30 seconds, and go. And at the end of 30 seconds, they all had their teams. They had to have a spokesperson, and they had to have someone who could justify their answers, and not just a spokesperson, but everybody had to participate. So they were able to take those court cases, figure out which amendments of theirs were involved in it, and then have a discussion back and forth. Well, we don't think that's right. Well, I disagree with you, because in the Second Amendment, it says this. Does it really say that? Let's go back and look at what the Second Amendment says. Yeah, we can have AK-47s. No, no, that's not what it says. Go back to the wording of the Second Amendment. So what I had provided the students ahead of time was a three-column sheet of the Bill of Rights. One, that is the actual wording from the Bill of Rights, and if you're not aware, most of them only have one sentence in them, and it could be this long, and it's one sentence. And the kids look at it and go, oh, no. In the middle, how does it apply to me? What does it look like? How is it, how, what is it? And then to the right, or I'm sorry, to the left, was a kid-friendly version. They took it and put it in the kids' words. So they had those with them, and I said, that's the only thing you need, that's what you're going to need that day. So they went to that. Then they said, do I have a right? That one was a blast. That was going in, and they had to, it was anime, well, what they would call anime, I'm not really sure, but they had the little elevator door opened up, it was a game, and in walks this little person, and then they stand there and they wait, and then they say little things, like, if they don't come to me soon, I'm just going to leave. And then it goes back. And then the little small thought bubble comes back out again, well, I'm going to give them just two more seconds to get to greet me. If they don't want my court case, they don't need it. Then they had to figure out how to take their person and walk over to greet that person. And that person then had to say whether or not there was, what they were, what they were there for. Then they had an attorney that had to go over and meet them and decide, listen to their case. Did they have a case? Did they have a right? Do you have a right to have a dog? That's a right to own property. Hmm, it's in there somewhere. I'm going to say it's number nine. And that's what the kids did. So then they got to go back, and then it was decided whether or not they had a court case or not. One of my students, Kyle, was really funny, he came charging down the hall, and he said, Ms. Payne, you will not believe this, I won 13 cases. I lost two, but I won 13. And you do have a right to a dog. And so I kind of cracked up, I'm like, I just love them to pieces. So then, as you go through, then there's the Bill of Rights game. And then they actually had to play against each other, and they had to decide, did they have that right in a card that would give them a pass? And if they got to a certain percentage, were they ready to call for a vote? And so the kids got to go through and to see which rights they had, and how they applied to them. Then they went down to question and answer on video, the Bill of Rights. That part was really, really interesting. There were three different video segments, one was seven minutes, one was nine minutes, and one was 10 minutes. With each one of those came a series of links, hot links with questions and answers that were videos. So there were about a two-minute video clip that the kids could watch, they could pick the question that they wanted to answer. And how we did that was, we had Mr. Capico, who came in, and he's a math teacher, and he's all about having fun with the kids, and he, he's just a, he's just a really kind of an interesting math teacher, because he's just vivacious, and the kids, you know, they love what they see in him. Well, he showed up as Professor Capico. And the kids quite didn't know what to do with him, because he had a shirt and a tie on, and he had a podium, and they had to speak to him, and they had to raise their hands, and, but it all played into his little video game, and it was wonderful to watch how it went. Then we went down and we followed our regular schedule for lunch and recess, but the kids didn't want to go outside, they wanted to stay inside, and they wanted to play on the computers, on the games, on the websites. Then we went down to the ratification game, and the ratification game turned out to be a lot of fun. Were we going to ratify this Constitution or not? And they had to play against each other, and they played up into teams of four, and then they debated each other, and they played against each other, and they had to try to outdo each other to see which rights or which, whether it was going to, if you called for a vote, and you didn't have enough support, you had to go back to stage one. They didn't want to lose their points. Or if you called for, hey, I think I want to vote onto this one, and they had to outmaneuver. And if they could lose five points, then that meant they were under 50%, and they would lose their right to have call for a vote, and they had to re, keep going through it. So it was all this constant discussion back and forth. Finally, which rights do I value most? This is a piece that was not taken from the, this was taken from the Billofrightsinstitute.org. And this is because my students weren't at the level to be able to start with those higher-level court cases. My students needed to back down, and I recognize that in my students. So they had to pick the right that they thought was most important, and food was it. And I had to explain to them, well, okay, food is one of those things, really doesn't fall into this. But then they had to write a paragraph explaining why they had chosen that right, which amendment did that right fall under, and they had to justify it for me. Finally, I threw this whole thing together, and I said, I want to see if this works. If I give them a quiz, if I give them, whatever I give them the next time, that's too soon. I want to see if I have long, enduring understanding of what their rights are. So two weeks later, I created the Bill of Rights stamp. And the kids had to draw, I'm sorry, first they had to write their rough draft of which of a scenario, let me say it that way. And their scenarios could be anything they wanted on any of the Bill of Rights, they had to come up with this whole idea. And their stories were extremely creative. In the first paragraph, they couldn't tell me which right was violated, which amendment it was, whether it was being upheld. They just had to write their short story, their creative writing. And my goodness, I have some of the greatest lines and people, it's just hysterical, some of the names they chose, we got Billy Bob and Joey Sue, and, and we even have a Cluck Cluck and a, and a Bobo. So, but then the second paragraph in that is where the justification came in. And that's where you could see that this Williamsburg field trip itself put that application piece into their hands. They talked it, they felt it, they worked it, they played it. And that's where I see the justifications of which right they had, why they had it upheld, or why it was denied to them, and what the police had done wrong, or what the, you know, what the judge had done wrong. So the true understanding of what their citizenship is, was coming out. And in an eighth grader, that's really difficult to pull out of them. And I was really pleased by how that all came together. What was amazing was the number of kids who sent me emails and asked for the web links so they could go home and play. And they are playing their parents. And so their parents are learning from this. Because we have lots of parents that don't have the same educational standard that their kids have now, because of the Common Core state curriculum, and the Common Core and the state curriculum, and the rising of the standards, many of the things we're asking our students to do weren't done in eighth grade. You know, I joke with my students, I can recite the Bill of Rights. Why? Because I had to. Did I understand it? No. Do they? Yes. But I had to memorize it in eighth grade, but I didn't know how to apply it. They know how to apply it because of this. Now, Mrs. Payne, I thought this was going to be boring, but it was really fun. When I said, we're going to have a field trip inside the school, she's like, oh, God, how lame is that going to be? That's what she said over her shoulder in my class. I said, hold up, what do you mean that's going to be lame? This is going to be a lot of fun. Yeah, I don't think so. So she came up to me after, she said, I was so wrong, this was really, really cool. The lawyer game, that's Ms. Adair's room, was a blast. I won 13 cases and I lost two. When can we do this again? And this was Kyle, he was all over it, he still plays it. And he, and what's really kind of comical is that the tie that I had with Kyle before this was all about his big, huge dog that he has, that's 215 pounds as a puppy, and he's one. Now, we talk about the Constitution, now we talk about our Bill of Rights. So that beginning conversation I had of knowing my learner, and learning his learning style, and bringing that, and this full thing, full circle, made such a difference in my class. It was amazing. So, there is me, that's how we went through the day. It was tremendous fun. There are so many activities listed on these, the Williamsburg Foundation site, that it's amazing. 26 pages of lesson plans that matched my curriculum, I didn't have to dig for, that matched my students, and I could pull the pieces that I wanted out, and still have a meaningful day. They even took their citizenship test. 97 questions. Can you pass that? Probably not. And so it was amazing how the kids have gone home, and they've tried that. And several of the kids shared with their classmates the stories of their parents becoming citizens of the United States, and studying for these tests, and not realizing how tough these tests were for those kids. And so to watch this circle around, and around, and around, it's invaluable. One day of instruction to get week's worth of learning was just a lot of fun. We are going to be doing the next one that's coming up, we missed the live version because we weren't there curriculum-wise. And then we are going to do the one on the War of 1812. I just spent three years on Teach American History grant, learning about the War of 1812, all the little fun things that I'm going to have, will absolutely supplement the War of 1812 on the virtual field trip. So that's how I'm able to tie my educational curriculum to it. And I just can't say enough about the programs, because they're in-depth, they're well-planned. So what would I change? Oh, here's my, here's my team. Mrs. Adair, they, we had so much fun. I was, I was Mr. Payne. I wore my son's suit, my husband's shirt and tie. They were all mortified that everybody fit in the same clothes in the house, that was not a good sign. Yeah. Proud parenting moment here.
Very good. I know your husband and kids well, I'll, I'll take them the same way.
So, yeah. Yeah, it was so fun. We just had a blast. We had all different characters, different, Mrs. Adair wore a 17th century real costume that she uses, that she makes, custom-made, handmade, as she said, the last time she had to wear it, she had to do some alterations to it. But we had a great time. I even had kids on the, on the bottom slide, on the bottom is where they're sitting on the floor arguing with each other. They were so engaged, it's hard to walk into a classroom and realize that we took over all of the media center, and we took over all of the computer labs, and we took over our own classrooms. And to see those kids fully engaged, no matter where we went throughout the day, was just an amazing piece. And what they took out of it, even more amazing. So what would I do differently? Okay. Sorry, Mr. Kornz, I wasn't positive this was going to work, because we had technical issues. However, I would, in the future, have them blog. Blogging is a way in which they can write their thoughts and feelings and questions, and they can have them, other people respond to them. So what a great way for them to be able to add depth to their knowledge by having other students respond back. And emailing George Mason, he emails you back. Now, it's really not George Mason, because the kids were like, oh, my God, he's like 200 years old. So, you know, they don't have it all, but they're getting it. And I have to say, I really, I really wish we could have added those pieces into it, because that would have been that farther one. But that's where I pulled these assignments from. So I do have a set of the assignments here, if you guys want to see their Bill of Rights when we're done, we can show you those. But it was just an amazing thing. And if you don't have the team that's willing to give up their instructional day, because trust me, they feel the push to have to have their instructional time with their kids, that's going to be difficult. So you're going to have to choose carefully what you pick. But bang for the buck? Oh, my goodness. I am so glad I took that webinar to start this process, because it was something I wanted to do, and I felt that my kids could learn from it, and I was so right, and I'm so glad I did.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Well, you can see an outstanding teacher. You know, it's interesting to hear Ms. Payne talk before we get into this, Dr. Raspe. You know, we've had a lot of conversation about the right people on the right bus, on the right, in the right seats, and the enthusiasm that they convey for their program makes that program even more special. What we've seen is, regardless of the topic here this evening, which is extremely important, what we've seen is an incredible teacher who brings this level of enthusiasm every day to bring this project to life even further. I've known you forever, and I really value you as a member of this school district in terms of a teacher. I will have a hard time getting out of my head the fact that you all do fit in the same clothes, but that's, that's, I don't want to say that's my main takeaway this evening, because it's not.
Well, that takeaway for me wasn't a good one, so it's okay.
Cory would be mortified.
Yeah. Well, it was Cory's suit, so, you know.
Right, right. Dr. Raspe to you with your board. Any questions for the board members or comments?
First of all, thank you for taking the time to come here this evening.
This was after two days of serving 170 students Thanksgiving.
Yes, yes.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Bachner, do you want to say anything about this, and, you know, in your school?
It's wonderful to have teams that just do what they need to do for children, and this all kind of happened with the team. And what's funny is, I got an email from Dr. Marr after he visited, and sharing all this, all that was going on, and it didn't surprise me at all, that's just how the team works. They take on those new challenges, and you have to with the Common Core, you have to take risks, and you have to let your teachers take those risks, and the kids take those risks and learn, because it becomes a real powerful tool, and I commend Ms. Payne, because it takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of work outside of 45 minutes of planning, and it takes a lot of trust of that team, which is very, very powerful, and what makes middle school work is that teaming. And if you've had children in middle school, you know how valuable that is, and this is just a testament to that. So I am blessed this holiday season to have teachers that are willing to do these things for kids, because the benefit is amazing. And truly, when I walked into the classroom, I think Dr. Marr and Mr. Wright can say this, the kids didn't even know we were there. And they often don't know I'm there, because I, I walk around, but these two gentlemen were newer people walking in, and they were just so busy arguing and debating, and busy doing what they were to do. It was just really fun to kind of stand back and watch and listen, which again, is a big part of the new Common Core curriculum, is kids are actually discussing and facilitating, and we're just kind of watching and guiding as needed. So thank you, Ms. Payne.
Wonderful.
All right, questions or comments? Mrs. Allen?
If I could say, and I, and I'm going to say this, as a teacher, this is one of those just gold mines, because it is tested, it's well-written, it's, there's so many more activities that I could have chosen. That was part of my problem, is I picked 14 activities. And then, so then, Mrs. Adair and I laid them all out on the floor on index cards, and she said, okay, I know you want to do 14, but you can't, we have six class periods. So then I had to go back and try to figure out which ones were the most important ones for the kids. And there were so many activities that I, just the plethora of it, that if there's a way to fund this again, then I would truly, that's, it's something that I will make on my own, or I will end up purchasing on my own, because it's one of those things that's that valuable as a teacher. And it replaces books and copies that you just can't even imagine, because the kids got hands-on. And so for me, it's one of those things that, after I did this field trip, or set this up, I emailed Mr. Wright, and I said, I just got an email from them offering me a discount. He's like, no, 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 you're covered. I'm like, okay, are you sure? Because I have this field trip going, and I don't want to screw it up. So it's one of those things that I just, I wish you guys could have been there to see it, because the kids learned so much out of it, and got so much out of it, and I learned, and I got stuff out of it. And I learned different things about students that really, you know, you key in, some of those kids know a whole lot more about their rights than they should know at 12, and 13, and 14. And so it's one of those things that I really wish that the board would consider, and Dr. Marterano, that you would consider this for, school-wide, for that middle school, because it's so important. And it's one of those trips that, when you talk about a field trip, you spend so much time on a bus sometimes, that you don't get to the actual learning that you want the kids to get out of it. But to be able to spend that instruction time, instead of going an hour and a half each direction into Washington, D.C.,
each direction into Washington, D.C., I spent those additional three hours on instruction with the kids. And all because I got to go to a webinar. So, Mr. Wright, thank you for that. And Mrs. Bachner, it's amazing that she allows us to do these crazy things, because she comes into our classroom, and she just, "Keep on going. Okay, I'm going." So thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, very much. Mrs. Allen?
The... Mrs. Payne, Tammy, is infectious in how she approaches everything she does. And I too have known her for a long time. In fact, I would venture to say I've known her longer than the superintendent. I've been lucky enough to have my children in her classroom. One of the things that middle school students love to do is to challenge, you know, challenge and argue, and what a healthy way to have them accomplish this.
Well, the interesting piece that I actually forgot to share was, when they did their final product, okay, when they did this final product, and this one says, "Sorry, government failing, shutdown." It was perfect timing. But when they did this, they actually used their rubric, which was, the assignment was whoops, on the other side of it, but they typed up their final copies. And that second paragraph, where they didn't tell about the rights to the students, we argued them in class. And some of the kids put four, five, or six different things in their scenarios, and wrote me, some of the papers are turned sideways. And so that argumentative piece that they're learning to do, and not just recite, but the struggles of actually learning how to put it out there, and simply not restate, but turn and make it their own, that's what this did. And I was really curious to see how it worked two weeks post the assignment. So that's why I waited two weeks post the assignment, and they're like, "We finished that already." I'm like, "Oh, no, no, no. If you notice, they're only little quizzes and classwork stuff, but now here's your process grade, or your product grade."
Well, it's, you know, in medicine, we always said, "See one, do one, teach one." It's so much more powerful to be a part of what the activity is, to be a part of the process. I think probably, if you asked anyone in this room about what are their, what are the strongest memories about things that happened to them in school, for these kids, this is going to be one of their most powerful, because this is just incredible. I mean, your enthusiasm, I did want to, I mean, you've got me going, "Okay, well, next time you do this, let us know." Because it's to see the kids learning, not just having somebody talk at them, or tell them, "You've got to learn this," but to make it so they want to, and that there's a tie-in for them, that they're not just going to get it for those few moments for that week or so, but that, at the end of this year, I guarantee you, they will be able to talk about their rights, and what truly is in the Bill of Rights. And so many times in the last few months, I've wanted to say to the nation at large, "Did you read the Bill of Rights? You know, did you? Where did school systems fail in their civic education? Because people know what they believe, but it doesn't necessarily jive with what is truly there." And so thank you, because I do, I can imagine this was just an extraordinary amount of work.
It was a lot of fun, and it's not, it's work, yes. Figuring out the schedule, figuring out which pieces you want is work, but not having to go dig for it is not work.
Absolutely.
And to have it there for you is the incredible piece that I was shocked at how easy that was.
Well, it's part of working smarter, not harder. And it's also a part of the fact that technology and what's available that's crowdsourced is so effective. One of the things that parents had a real hard time with last night was that their students don't have textbooks, in a lot of cases. At least, this was going on over in Calvert County, and that the textbooks don't match up with the new curriculum that we have. And having the state superintendent try to explain to people that there is a mismatch between curriculum writing and textbook manufacturers, but at the same time, more and more, we are going to sources that are beyond textbooks, and we're trying to encourage our students to do so. And if we're telling them this is available for them, we're deficient if we're not showing them and having them utilize that, because they have to be able to discriminate and understand, not everything that's on the Internet is true. And how do you decide, how do you determine what is true and what isn't, and what's factual and what's not?
Well, it's interesting that you bring that point up, because today, for two days in class, I had done Freedom's Feast. Freedom's Feast was a program started by Lee Handler. Lee Handler's family helped fund the Holocaust Museum. She came to me 10 years ago, and I know you remember this, because you participated in the night that we had dinner, the very first time I tried it, and it didn't, oh, well, anyway, we're good now. And it's the idea that you put the... Understand why we have Thanksgiving. And Thanksgiving is not for turkey, and it's not for football, and it's not for shopping, until Congress got a hold of it, and they made it for shopping. But it was to heal the wounds of the nation. It was made in 1859. Sarah Jocifah Hale started a 40-year campaign to get it to become a national holiday, to get it, to make it so it would last. She is the one who came up with our turkey, and eating the bird that we have, and the stuffing, and that kind of stuff. And it was an amazing thing. It was to heal the wounds of the nation, and to look back in the Constitution, and to renew our pledge to the Constitution. So today, we are reading parts of this that we have put together, and it is, when in the course of human events, it becomes evidence that, okay, we all know where that's from, hopefully. And what was interesting was, we had, and this is why I'm not totally sold on all straight textbooks, because there's so much more out there. I had done a video clip, that was a 10-minute video clip, from a dramatic reading of the Declaration of Independence, that had Mel Gibson in it, and it had Whoopi Goldberg, Morgan Freeman, Kevin Spacey, Winona Ryder. It was amazing. And the kids were, each kid had a different line. And as the kids went through it, one of the kids stopped, they go, as only eighth graders can say, "Yo, Ms. Payne, that's that Whoopi thing we watched." And so some of the kids are like, "My parents aren't going to read this." I said, "But..." And then, before I could say anything, one of the other kids said, "But they could watch that on YouTube, because it's on YouTube, because Ms. Payne got it on YouTube." I said, "Yeah, I showed it on YouTube, because it's not blocked, because it's an educational piece, and I was able to show that in my classroom." A different way to reach the kids to do the same thing. And to know that they remember Whoopi Goldberg from nine weeks ago, I was impressed.
Well, thank you, because our students are the ones who are benefiting from your enthusiasm and your knowledge and your willingness to impart that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any more questions?
Mrs. Washington?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryson?
The reason I'm involved in this program in Seaborn County is to put a broom to sleep with the educators face that they get. Do you think this will put reading about dead people to sleep, and our children are going to history and learning our history?
No, our kids are awake.
Thank you.
Yes. Our kids are awake, and our kids love to learn about them. It's really funny, because they always say to me, "Ms. Payne, what was it like back then?" Love that one. Well, I don't know, let me go back a couple hundred years. I know I look old. So, no, it absolutely brings it alive to them, makes it something they can see. You know, Williamsburg is a field trip that I have wanted to do for years. The problem is, Williamsburg is too far away to make it a day field trip.
Yes.
But I was able to bring part of Williamsburg into my classroom because of this virtual field trip. And I can't wait to get my hands on the other one, so we just have to get to the curriculum forum. But it's very important that we modernize with society. We are in the 21st century. We are creating and educating students for jobs that we don't even know exist yet. And if we don't continue to push the bounds here, we're not going to do our students service and justice.
One more thing I'd like to bring to the boards, the field trip that she went on. She's in the middle school age range. We had that same field trip at the elementary school level. We had that same field trip at the high school level. There's a field trip that's coming up that I'm sure you will have. It actually concerns the women of the revolutionary period. And it's very unusual, very unfamiliar, but it's set up to the elementary school kids. It's 14-minute picture, and they are on the field trip with the, to fight the blockade the British put on. The young ones are going to see an ideal scene of a doc, a shopkeeper, and two mice puppies. The mice explain what's going on, how they're starving on the ships, because there's no ships coming in. It gives them all this information. They go through this field trip. There's iPhone games they can play off of it. There's rewards for it. Another thing that happens, my wife and I were there for the Thomas Jefferson, John Adams debate, and they brought out today's history of Barack Obama and John McCain's election, how similar the issues were. And it wasn't about, it was to show to the audience how history can repeat itself. And this is the most valuable program I've ever seen in my life for educating our children to, we're all worried about what the state and the core values are. The city of Baltimore and Baltimore County have had this electronic field trip for four years.
That is true.
This electronic field trip is only about...
And I've heard about it for three years through Teach American History grant. And trying to get it and not have to spend my own teaching money out of it was something that I really wanted to do. And when that came upon it, I jumped right on it. I think I must have had the email for about 30 seconds before I sent it back, thinking, "I want to do this."
Dr. Marterano, how much does this program cost?
Kevin, go ahead, and talk about that a little bit in Japanese, please.
It costs, for each school, $250 per school.
That's all?
It was originally, it was originally, it was $500. And then, after community discussion with Williamsburg, and then, in return, they reduced the rate across the country to $250 per school, but it was originally 500.
So, let me frame this a little bit. So this is very exciting in many respects, and what I wanted to do is sort of frame it at a higher level. Mr. Bryson, first of all, thank you for being here this evening. The reason this has come about is, quite frankly, because of Mr. Bryson. I have to tell you, I did not know this project existed. Mr. Wright, Dr. Marr, and we're up on our curriculum. We didn't know that this opportunity had existed. Mr. Bryson, who is a fantastic community member, he is a member of the House of Burgess at Williamsburg, the Williamsburg Foundation. And that entitles him to a lot of opportunities associated with it, his great interest in history, his great affection for St. Mary's County, and his great support of the St. Mary's County Public School system. I've had a number of personal conversations with him. Dr. Raspa has advanced this with Mr. Bryson. There's been a number of meetings in my office with Mr. Wright, Dr. Marr, to discuss this process. And so, we're talking about the financial piece. We're also looking at links regarding our curriculum. I've talked to you in the State of the School System address about using our dollars judiciously to get the very most out of those dollars to benefit our students, talked about our textbooks, how they're obsolete once we buy them, they're static, and the need to bring in these online, real-life opportunities. So as we are in the shift of instruction, we're also in the shift of shifting our whole paradigm of what a traditional classroom once looked like, where there was many a conversation at the dais to ensure textbooks were in every child's hand, and the incredible money that we've spent on that, to shift now to what is defined as tech books, using tech resources, all those pieces to support the curriculum. And this program that Mr. Bryson, and his wife is with us this evening as well, has been really instrumental. So we're advancing it this year in our four middle schools that we have. We heard about the price, we're going to build that in as our budget, as our shift occurs in our instructional resources, to expand this even further. And my role in this this evening is to frame it for a higher level, to define, once again, the use of relevant and real-life opportunities to refute the statement that Mr. Bryson said about, you know, as we're in agreement, about why do we study, you know, all those individuals from the past? My philosophy is, we must study history to understand the past, so that we can understand how, as we move forward. So as you made those comments about the election between John McCain and President Obama, a lot of those same issues. So look to the past to explain the future in real-life terms, and our children need to understand that. And Ms. Payne, I appreciate the fact, how you framed the understanding of the Bill of Rights. I too had to memorize that. I had to memorize a lot of things, but once that was done, it was done. Check that off a list. They memorized this, they memorized that, and we were done, as opposed to the deep understanding and knowledge for why we do what we do. So my role this evening is to show, quite frankly, at a different level, the power of a community partner, bringing something forward through a board member, Dr. Raspa, bringing that forward to our instructional staff, and now seeing the benefit of that. So we can take this on several different prongs. You're hearing the teacher perspective, you're hearing my perspective in terms of the palpable, real partnership that exists in advancing that. And tonight, we're going to recognize Mr. Bryson for doing that, but we also want to continue to ask the questions about the reality of how this ties into the Common Core, and this is exactly what Common Core looks like, as a real opportunity, as we saw last night. So, Dr. Raspa, I wanted to frame it, before we got too far down the road, why we're doing what we're doing this evening, and had the real-life teacher, principal, director, supervisors all here to advance that with a partner, to advance this.
You're talking, I mean, basically, we're talking about, for the cost of about five textbooks per school, that we could offer a dynamic, living program. How could we not?
Exactly. So, board members, just stay with me, and stay very actively engaged as we make that analysis in terms of the amount of cost. So when I talk about a textbook adoption for a school system our size, for example, the science textbook adoption series we were looking at was a little, well, close to $2 million. Once we put those books in the hands of our young people, you have to realize, and particularly with a history book, and when we talk about the same adoption for a school system this size, the way the shifts occur in the world, just the range of the political dynamics, it's like a new car. As soon as you take it off the lot, it depreciates, and it continues to depreciate over time. And so, shame on us, you know, to advance a static piece of information if we're not providing, we need to move to that level of shift, the dynamic tools, such as this website, this interactive virtual field trip, and the tech books, T-E-C-H, as opposed to textbooks, that advances real, relevant, cutting-edge information in front of our children at all time. And that's where we need to be. And we'll do the, we're going to continue to do the budget analysis, but you're going to hear a lot of advocacy on my part to really advance this agenda. It was further evidenced in several articles written today about the State of the School System address, and this is evidence of advancing to that agenda. And I know, through Tammy's great enthusiasm here this evening, I just sat back and listened. She's had made that case for our community in that sense, and with a partner like Mr. Bryson, and the advocacy of this board, that's going to happen for our young people. It's exciting. It's just so exciting, that's all I can tell you. So, Dr. Raspa, continue, and then we'll bring Mr. Bryson up.
I'd like to continue, see if board members have questions or comments. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. Mrs. Payne, I can sense your energy and enthusiasm about taking on something new, fresh, and challenging. Collaboration and teamwork are essential, not only for the students, but for the teachers to work together and collaborate. And this is a shift from when the teacher would work independently, or maybe just co-taught with two other teachers. Now you're working with many disciplines. Education is always changing, and our brightest people in society are teachers. And thank you, you shape minds. We live in a virtual world, and now we have virtual indoor field trips. Who would have thought? I've been on many field trips as a parent volunteer, and I can understand what you're saying about, you spend as much time on the bus as where you're going, maybe to a museum. Most of the time was spent on the bus. Not that I'm... Not that I'm counting field trips out completely, but I understand that concept. What you did, you utilize speaking skills, critical thinking skills, working as a team, collaboration, and discussion. And all those are those, as you see on the board, essential survival skills for the 21st century learner. And your program is, thank you, Dr. Raspa, I mean, Dr. Materano. Using textbooks in this case would have been very limited. But I can see how you use the technology to search the web for additional up-to-date and relevant resources. Because as Dr. Materano said, soon as you buy a textbook, it's out of date. And if it's in an era in the textbook, how do you correct it? So, this was hands-on directed learning, where the student is able to learn what something means instead of just the rote memory of it. Just like Dr. Materano said, we learned all of this, but okay, now what does it really mean? And how do we apply it to real life? And this fits right in with the Common Core state standards. You know it, but it's taking it to a deeper level. As we said, the old curriculum was a mile wide and an inch thick. Now, it's more depth to the curriculum where you really delve into the learning. Our computer, students' Arkham Computer Society, so therefore, this fits right in to what they've been doing since they were toddlers. And we can see toddlers in the community texting and doing all kinds of things on a computer. So, this invigorates the student, make them more interested. It makes a direct connection with our students. Even though it took the field trip outside the classroom, it made it real. So, in order to aggressively move forward with these 21st century skills, we must take the calculated risk to ignite higher learning and higher thinking for both teachers and students. So, I thank you for choosing the teaching profession. That is the toughest profession that I know. And all educators need to be commended because everyone started with a teacher. Where would we be, any of us, without a teacher? And because the children spend the best hours of their day with the teacher. So, and you're teaching the whole time. So, thank you very much, all of you that worked on this. This is wonderful. This is exciting. And as I always say, the norm in education has changed. We have to keep raising the bar. We have to move up in our standards. The United States, even though Maryland is number one in the nation, we're not doing so well on an international level. So, we're moving up, raising the bar for everybody. So, this will make our country greater and our students. And we can get back to number one in STEM and all the other disciplines where we are falling behind. So, this is exciting and it's exciting to be a board member, to be right here where all of this is happening and working with my wonderful board members, student board members, and you for bringing this to our attention. And we appreciate both of you coming here on a very cold night to be here with us. And everybody else who participated, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir. Well, Dr. Raspa, first off, I want to thank you for bringing Mr. Chuck Bryson into this little room with us and bringing this forward. I can see the excitement level ramps up. And when you have people excited about what they're teaching, it's electric. Ms. Payne, you could make anything exciting either.
I, we're so lucky to have you. You know, I'm sitting here listening to the excitement level and I just keep remembering, you know, our graduation rate just hit ninety percent. And it's, this is the reason. It's right here. And thank you very much. It's fitting that it's Thanksgiving because I'm very thankful that you're around. Thank you.
Mrs. Crowe?
When I was in the 4H, when I was about eleven, just a few years back, my saying, and I must have stolen it from somebody, was learn by doing. And I was always doing demonstrations and shaking the whole time with the judges out there, making cupcakes. Anyway, I went on to teach a mini semester in a small private school that's very close to us on the Civil War. And I took six children for a week to Gettysburg. And I did something that I could never be allowed to do. I bought them cap guns.
Strike that.
Yes, strike that. And anyway, they went to the hill, little round top. And we went to bloody run and we went everywhere and they loved it. It's the same sort of thing. But that was only six kids that I could take. You can take as many kids as we can buy this for, which is a big, big difference. And then as far as inquisitiveness, I've been teaching that my whole life. Not, it's been going on ever since Socrates and you remember what happened to him, don't you? He drank the poison potion. One day I will too, right? And as far as what Dr. Materano, yeah, Dr. Matero, I am wound up tonight. What you said about history repeating itself, I do believe I heard that tonight. And I gotta bring this up because I am really upset about something here. The peace in our time with Neville Chamberlain in 1938. And I stayed up all night the other night listening to what we've done. I think we're real, I gotta be careful here. I have to be diplomatic. We're gonna be really sorry for what we've done with the nuclear armaments and Iran. There's just no doubt. And if the people that did that had learned their history, they would not have done that. And mark my words, something's going to happen. That's all I can say. I can't say what will happen. Just come and see me later and I'll tell you. You're wonderful, nice and exciting. I love it. And thank you, Lisa, all of you. Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowe. Peter?
I just want to say, one, one statement, follow up on something. This, this is learning to me. This, this is really what makes people, or make our students come to school, learn something and remember it and apply it to our lives for a long time. Something that we will remember, something that we will think about when we think about our government and think about the way that it's run. And I myself, I'm actually a little jealous because I went to Lantetown Middle School. And when I went to Lantetown Middle School, I, I had a teacher, my government teacher, Mr. LeGrand, I think he retired the year after. And I can clearly remember to this day how he used to incorporate some, some fun activities in class and things that made me remember that some of the, some of the basics of government. And those, the things that I learned, I, I just remembered. And when I took US government in high school, a high school level class, and the rest of, I went to Chautauqua High School. The rest of my class usually either came from Margaret Brent or another school, maybe a private school. And I clearly remember using the things that I learned in eighth grade in Mr. LeGrand's class and those interactive, in those interactive activities. Again, in high school. And with this program having the school-wide or the grade-wide event that, that targets the kids and really gets us active. And I remember having Mr. Capico as well, he was my teacher, as you call him, Professor Capico, and getting even the teachers that were, that were involved just to make the day even more memorable and to go back and making it interactive, making it, even incorporating technology. So, when we use technology with those things, it makes it even, even more interesting. And when it's interesting, we remember. And that's what really targets. And I think this, this program is wonderful because compared to even now in high school, I can go and have an assignment and have to just read a very long, three pages, three pages of just words and they're having trouble with it. But I might just watch even a small video and just having my eyes open, it's being more interactive and I think, think about it more, even my everyday life, just, just thinking about it, making it more personal and remembering it. And that's what, I shouldn't say we all, but you guys are here for, to make us learn and to make it applicable to our adult lives when we, when we go through life and using those things. So, it's not just, I assume you guys said, you kind of go through the drill, remember it, then a week later, you, you don't know if you remember it anymore. And it, it has many applications, like I said. And I mean, reading a textbook is one thing, you get the, get the information. But when you go and you're interactive with, with the program, you're interactive with, with the coursework, that's truly something different that really makes you think, wow, this, I can go home and tell my mom, "Mom, I learned this today" with pride, instead of going, "Yeah, because school was fine." I, I did work.
We love you, Peter Widmire. You are just the best board member ever.
Yes. And I think just the program is wonderful. Thank, thank you.
Wonderful words, Peter. Thank you.
Peter, thank you very, very much. I want to thank Dr. Marr and Mr. Wright for taking hold of this program and following through and, you know, doing the research on it and getting involved with the Williamsburg people. Mrs. Bachner, thank you for letting it happen in your school. Principal commitment, enthusiasm, and we know Mrs. Bachner has the enthusiasm. And she is committed because she can see a great thing coming and she wants that in her school. I've known Mrs. Bachner a long, long time and I'm very comfortable in saying those kinds of things. And she knows that. And Mrs. Payne, for you, what can I say? I just want to know when the next one is because I want to be there. I want to be there. And the school system is committed, as you've already heard tonight from everybody. We're doing this, we're going to continue with this. Dr. Materano is committed. The teachers you work with are committed, you know. All this excitement, it's great. And that's the excitement we need to have in our classrooms. And we need exciting teachers like you. And we have these exciting teachers. We just need the programs. Like you said, you were so excited when you saw it, you read about it and you knew something about it before it got to your level at school. And it just happens that Mr. Bryson and I are friends and we talk a lot about what happens in schools. One thing leads to the other. And he said, "What about this program?" I said, "What are you talking about?" And he lectured me for two hours. And he didn't have to sell me on anything because the word virtual field trips means something, just the words. It's excitement. If you just stop and think about those words, it's full of excitement. And you start thinking about, man, what does this mean? That means I could be in it. I could be part of it. I'm getting excited again, Mrs. Al. It's like I was the other night at the Farm Bureau meeting, you know, and on and on and on. But Mrs. Payne, thank you very much. And please bring back to the team our thanks.
Yes, absolutely.
And we would like to be invited to come, maybe not all of a sudden one time. We don't want to excite people, you know. We don't have to come all the time, you know.
My kids are used to people in and out of the classroom all the time.
Yeah. And I'm sure Mr. Bryson and his lovely wife, Mary Ann, would love to come, you know, just to, just to take a look. But in any event, thank you very much. And we want to thank the superintendent for grabbing a hold of this. And he was committed to it, is committed to it. And he said, "Let's do it." And that's all we had to hear. Let's do it. And we are doing it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And board members, there's another prong to this evening, as I talked about in terms of the relationship and the partnership. So, I have Mr. Bryson here to my left. And again, let me re-echo those words again, restate those words. And again, his wife is here as well and we're delighted that she's here. But without him bringing this forward to Dr. Raspa, we wouldn't be having this conversation tonight. And, you know, we try to be on the cutting edge of information. We did not know this was available to us. He opened that door. He actually made some phone calls for us. We had some conversations about the funding. We are committed to this for the future. So, as a tremendous friend, I like to call you friend as well, as well as a community partner, this represents the best of education right here this evening. Community bringing information forward to a school system that's dynamic and robust and advancing it even further on behalf of the children. So, as a small token of our appreciation, Mr. Bryson, as a superintendent of this wonderful school district, I would like to recognize you as along with our wonderful elected board members in recognition of your advancement and promotion of the Williamsburg Project to support the instructional goals of the St. Mary's County Public School System and all the children contained within our wonderful school system. You've made an impact and you're truly touching the future in that sense. So, join me if you would in a thunderous round of applause for Mr. Bryson. Would you like to say a few words? Come on over here. I got, you're on, you're on, being recorded for TV. Well, you do, it's for TV.
Dr. Marr, I would like to tell you this evening, I'm going to give you $10,000 for this program.
Whoa, 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 excuse me? You just said $10,000?
That's what I said.
Oh, my God.
I heard.
Thank you.
I do this for our children and I do this for myself and every other businessman in St. Mary's County. As being a member of Colonial Williamsburg, this is not something we just dreamed up five years ago. But we did find out how to excite the children. As a businessman, I have our students coming out of high school that don't have the opportunities, inclination, or the money to go to college. So, they have to do something. Our children today have four paths of life. Education. They can't get their education at the higher level. They have to go out, go to work, go into the military. The last item is if they don't have that education, they go to jail. And what we have done as, as, as an organization in this country is we've made it easy for our children to take that cell phone out, text, everything. You know the kids, oh, they are text masters. They are the fastest two thumbs on the U.S. I have them come in and try to communicate to me. They have no communication skills. This at any level opens up your communication skills. This is why Colonial Williamsburg bought this project to the school system.
Wow. I mean, I heard everything you just said, but I'm still back on a $10,000. Honestly, I mean, I'm sitting here, you know, they were talking about how long I talk and I'm sort of speechless. I mean, I, that's just, yeah. Whatever it takes is our motto. I mean, I am absolutely speechless, but everything you just said is absolutely real. This is, you've caught me completely off guard this evening in terms of surprise. This will allow us to advance this and expand it. I mean, I saw the shock in terms of the four individuals up here who represent.
That includes ourselves.
And this is just the beginning in terms of the advance. But this is the kind of community we live in. I had no idea this was going to occur this evening. So, I'm gonna go back and do my report again. I am so thankful to be a part of this community and to be a part of.
You're the leader of this program.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And that's hard to do, to catch me at that level of surprise. Round of applause for Mr. Bryson.
Dr. Materano, yeah, the board will take a break at this point and will take some pictures.
We're gonna take some pictures. Hang out with us. Thank you.
Okay, we'll reconvene after all the excitement.
Fitting our breath.
Putting it mildly.
Yes, yes, yes.
Where'd everybody go?
The next information item is St. Mary's County Public Schools Website Social Media Enhancement. Mr. Smith? And Mr. Brooks?
So, before they start, board members, keep in mind our vision plan. One of our major components in terms of our theory of action is to provide a robust communication plan in everything that we do. Communicate, communicate, communicate. Communicate, 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 and our website has turned into this wonderful vehicle that we're receiving tremendous number of hits on on a regular basis, we keep track of that, our community has been socialized to go here on a regular basis. And the individuals in the front row are extremely bright, and they will take us further than we've ever expected in terms of integrating all the social networks. Mr. Smith and the individuals are going to reveal to us this evening how we're using social networks, making those connected, digging deeper into our school websites, the interaction between all of those, and then how we're going to post all of our videos and the link to Channel 96 off of here as well. So there's so much in motion right now, but it's that continuous improvement effort. So the fact is, if, I want you to really understand all of this, but this will allow us to have further opportunities for our community to engage with what's occurring at the board meetings, with what's occurring in our school system, because we have to realize that not everybody in the county has access to cable network, Channel 96 on their television stations at home. This will allow those opportunities for that to happen. Without further ado, let me turn it to Mr. Smith to lead this team, who's going to present this this evening.
Certainly, sir, and, and really, this came about through Dr. Matarano's, communicate, communicate, communicate. How are we telling our story? How are we going to leverage social media to tell our story? And it really did start with Channel 96 or 88.4, for those people who've gone through the digital conversion with Metrocast cable, and so we, we came back and we revisited how we're getting our story out to people. So three people came together, three incredibly talented people, Ms. Mary Ann Williams behind closed doors, Mr. Jason Pridgen, often working up at Bethune, but coming down and visiting us quite often on this project, and Mr. Barrett Brooks, newly resident here at, at Mokley Street. And they said, you know, what can we do with the site? How do people communicate? How do we get our story out? What are we already doing? What can we do better? What can we integrate? And as Peter may very well know, what do people do? They tweet. They Facebook, they YouTube, and then they stream media. And so what we've done is we've built those four buttons onto our newly revised site that will be up at the conclusion of this meeting, we'll work to make it live by the time people come back from their Thanksgiving break. So without further ado, I'd like to have the person who actually is kind of working through this every single day, Mr. Barrett Brooks.
Mr. Brooks?
I was going to give you guys $20,000, but instead, I'm going to show you this new website. So, we wanted to keep everything familiar, so the site is everything you have come to rely upon, but with new navigation that makes navigating the site a little bit more convenient. And the four big features are, we now have an official SMCPS Twitter feed, SMCPS Facebook page, our own YouTube channel, and we are working towards having a streaming service for Channel 96 so that anyone, anywhere in the world can watch our Channel 96 streaming as long as they have an internet connection.
Right.
Wow.
So, the Twitter feed, this has a very kind of simple, professional look. What we're doing is integrating all of the official SMCPS Twitter accounts, and we are creating one for every school in the system, and they will all automatically be retweeted into one giant compiled Twitter account. So every site in the county, when they tweet about events at the school, or upcoming events, or things that are happening, those tweets will automatically appear on this master Twitter feed. And that includes Dr. Matarano's feed as well. So this is going to be a great way for people to have a one-stop shop for everything, social media that's happening in the county. And we're going to be handing out those new accounts at A&amp;S in December. All right. Next up is the Facebook. Now, this is the official Facebook for the St. Mary's County Public Schools, went through the whole process of registering us. So this is run by a team of admins, Mr. Pridgen, myself, Mary Ann Williams, and I believe Scott Smith is also going to be one of the admins for it. It's set up so that we can post upcoming events that are happening in the school system, kind of give notifications of things that are going on, a little bit more interactive than just sending out a newsletter or, you know, email announcement. And it will allow people who like and follow the page to get these updates on their Facebook feed. We're also looking at integrating the Twitter account, the master Twitter feed, to automatically post those retweets onto this page. So this Facebook will then become sort of a virtual bulletin board of everything that's happening in the county. And schools are encouraged to contact us, like down here, if they have an upcoming event, and we can post it on the Facebook so that the entire community can be made aware of it very, very quickly, without the need for excessive, you know, paper flyers and things like that. So that's, that's this. And then our YouTube channel. So our YouTube channel is where we're going to be hosting all of the videos related to SMCPS. And this is an official YouTube channel, people can subscribe to it, and when they subscribe to it, they'll receive an email notification, either on a daily or a weekly basis, at their choice, of new videos that we have posted, which will keep them, you know, informed of, of what's going on in the county. We can have a featured video that we change out at our discretion. And within the channel, we can have several categories. So we have the board meetings, we have community videos, and there's no limit to how many videos we can store here, and it takes all the traffic off of our network and puts it onto Google and YouTube's network. So in a way, it's streamlining the entire county's internet by having these videos no longer hosted by us, but hosted where people can, can access them very quickly. And we have a category for diversity and instructional, and we can add as many categories as we need to continue sorting this out. But this is the current YouTube channel. It is up, it is ready, people can subscribe and check it out. And because it is on YouTube, it allows people to share these videos on their social media very quickly. So if they really liked the Red Ribbon Week from the middle school, they could go on here and share that onto their Facebook, and "Look what my granddaughter's been up to", and then that can be shared, and then the word gets out about our county and the work that we're doing. All right. The last part is our Channel 96. Currently, we're using a free service to sort of test out the possibilities, but we are looking into a more professional service that is extremely powerful. And the, the possibilities are incredible for what we could be doing with the streaming service. You could have grandparents living overseas that could watch a live broadcast of their children performing a school play, or taking part in a awards ceremony or something. It, it really allows us to connect in ways that we just haven't had the possibility to before.
So this is a whole new examination, and the challenge that I've put forward to this group is, what he just said there, is that how we'll do that at our graduations, recognizing we have a number of individuals in the military, the real-time connection coming right in and seeing things online, making connections for individuals who are overseas, wanting to make that connection with our parents, or with our students, their students, I should say. The power in all of this is just incredible as we pulled this together as the next step to higher levels of greatness. Continue, Barrett.
Oh, that's, that's actually, that's it. We've got the, the four new ways to share, connect, and stream information, and the new layout. The site will be up, as Mr. Smith has said, before you guys return from the break.
Exactly. And the other piece is that we've talked about, we will be putting out a press release to unveil this officially, so the community will know, we'll get this information out through all of our different communication pieces. We want this to be our primary entry point to our school system for our parents, a major link. It contains so many different pieces of information. Board members, I want you to, as, as you always do, to go in and navigate that over the holidays, find out what's on there. And so when you can direct our parents to it, the video gallery is unbelievable as far as information. We've put a link on there now of all the letters to the editor, so that you can use that as an educational tool as well. And Barrett, just for the sake of the meeting tonight, a number of my, our board members have not seen the Twitter feed, could you come up with, can you access my Twitter account right now?
Uh, sure. Let me look you up real quick.
MJM Super. And show you how real-time this is. If, if you follow my Twitter feed with the followers that we have, just, I just posted a Twitter feed, thank you, Mr. Chuck Bryson, for your $10,000 donation to advance our Williamsburg Instructional Initiative, Dr. Raspa, that picture was just taken less than 10 minutes ago, it's now out there on the social network already advancing. Individuals now will read that, they'll either favorite it, favorite it, or retweet it, and goes into a whole different set of individuals. People can reply to that in words of encouragement, but that's just occurred at this board meeting less than 10 minutes ago, and that's out there for the individuals following. Our goal is to have more individuals follow and linked into our school system, so it's a whole nother web of communication. And for me personally, it chronicles and highlights all the wonderful activities occurring. So when you see me at events, taking pictures, I'm not distract, being distracted by using a, a device during an event or being impolite, I'm actually doing something meaningful that's advancing our agenda and information about our school system during that period of time. If you go back to our last, I mean, I, you can go back to just the, the, the link of all the pictures that shows, and, and you can chronicle all the, I don't know if it runs it on this one or not, it shows all the pictures.
Are, you want me to go to your feed?
Uh, yes. It just displays different, so for example, there's the baskets being, there's the event at the Common Core meeting last night.
Right.
Uh, the flow mentoring event from the other night, the Chopticon and NHS induction. I took, I take pictures of the newspaper articles advertising the Breakfast with Santa coming up, the event of that, our, I think probably if you come down further, it just chronicles all kinds. I think there's the book signing with Mrs. Washington and her family members there, our, our community, our Veterans Day Assembly, I've come down just, and then, and look at that graduation rate could pass 90 percent. We want that to be retweeted and emphasized. The last board meeting, I took pictures of all of you, talked about the actions that was taking place at the dais, our ROTC members, so it chronicles this whole year in review. There's a PBIS celebration at Esperanza Middle School, and it just goes on and on and on, and chronicles the whole year from a different level. There's Mr. Corn, so presenting over in Ocean City as a leader, you know, across the state, number of things happening, that just chronicle over GED graduation, and that's all you need. And there's the wonderful performance at the Veterans Day Assembly as well at White Lenny Marshall Dead. So it's just a different way, and we have then our press releases linked to the Twitter feed for our Twitter feed, those are going out, the school system-wise, and everything is interconnected. So I want you to be aware of that, how sophisticated this is, and at the high level which we're using it, we've actually engaged in presentations for other school systems how to use this. When we were up at Discovery Network, people were coming to us asking how we're doing all of this. Considering, and I have to say this, we do not have a public information officer. I have to tell you that. A number of school systems have advanced all of this not nearly at the level of robust nature of which we have with a full-time public information officer. Just had to throw that in, board members, of what your staff...
Or full-time PIO office, as they have in Baltimore County.
Exactly.
With, what, 13 individuals?
Exactly, exactly. And we're keeping up with them and think what we could do if we had, and I thank all the connected individuals who have a part of all of this. These gentlemen here are just so smart, and they've advanced this, and they, you just tell them and ask them what to do, and they'll come up with a development. So I'm thrilled with this overall, board members, it's just, it achieves your goal once again of communicating with our partners, our community members and our parents, and there's no question about finding out information about our school system through this process. So thank you for your time. Anything else, Scott, Jason, Jim, anything, anybody else wants to say about this?
Oh, I'd like to say that the real value of this social media is Dr. Matarano's announcement on his Twitter, that's out right now. The article that will be written about it, it won't be out till tomorrow, the day after that.
Friday plus.
Yeah. So, like, this allows him to deliver that news to the community immediately, and get immediate feedback from the community about how they feel about it. And perhaps we didn't have, well, press here, they could see on his social media that it happened, and then write the article anyways. So it's that communication's happening so fast and so readily, that's what the real benefit is.
I absolutely love it.
The one who tells his story first and tells his story best is the story that carries the day. We, we will tell our story in so many ways, and, and ultimately, our goal is to reach the consumer. And so we know you're, we know you're tweeting, we know you're Facebooking, we know you're YouTubing, and anywhere in the world, you'll be Channel 96.
And, you know, what I'm trying to tell the community is, you know, to, to follow the superintendent of schools, not for the sake of following the superintendent of schools, but when, for example, when I will make decisions about closing schools, Mr. Clements will kick in with all of his traditional pieces that he will do, he's activating that after we've made the decision, the first thing I do is tweet it out and make sure that the website's there. So if you're really wanting the firsthand information, my number of followers increases exponentially during a storm, because it becomes retweeted, and people have started to figure that out. And so I'm asking that people really follow into these Twitter accounts, because that's real life, and there's a whole other process, it's called Vine, I'm not quite as sophisticated in that, it's the looping of a, how many second video?
Six.
Six-second video, so I could, and Mr. Hybol, if you went to his site, he's really good at this, it's another site where you take a six-minute video, six-second video. And so I tried it out in an athletic game, I was very much not able to do it right, so I'm still practicing on that. Then tweet that like a picture, and you can actually see like an athletic event, somebody kicking the ball, or that, and it relups continuously. So as the marching bands coming by, or somebody's reciting a pledge, you can have the visual image of it in a video, which is called Vine, and that's linked to the Twitter account as well. And that's something that's a goal for me to practice over the holiday, it's, it's, for me, it's a little more challenging because you have to kind of pan and move along with it, and I'm usually talking in the background, so that's something I got to work on, be quiet during that time. I know that's a surprise to all of you, so I just added it as an editorial, I've had to eliminate a couple because I was the one talking in the background. So, all good stuff. Anything else you want to say on that?
Just, I can't, you called three people into a room, and you talked a little bit about what you wanted, and Mary Ann, and Mary Ann Williams and Jason and Barrett, I mean, they delivered their, you know, you've got, you've got fantastic people doing things to make sure that we really are taking advantage of all the technology.
Exactly, and doing it with that, and again, I think it's more indicative, innovate for learning, remember our theme?
Right there.
Innovate for learning, and innovation is occurring in this district every day. And again, when Bill Gates was asked about where his innovation department is for his company, and he said, "I don't have one, everybody is expected to innovate, the whole staff. We don't have an innovation department, everybody in this district is expected to innovate and do something, the great next move for our organization." And this is a nice way to end before the holiday. So, guys, thank you for being here late this evening. This board went on, meeting went on a little longer this evening because we didn't expect to receive a $10,000 check.
Yeah.
Barrett, we really appreciate your presentation, but that $20,000, it's on film that you were going to do that. I can edit that out and say you made a commitment, and I will tweet that out too tonight. Thank you, gentlemen, and let's, board members, you have anything else to say?
Any questions or comments, board members?
Peter?
I was just going to say, these, these three, four things, they're great tools, and I know us as students, we use them all the time. And I actually did have a question, more towards Mr. Corns and you guys, for a lot of students that use the technologies in school, for example, if we go and we go to hack on our school, we go through the homepage usually, will these, like, for example, the Twitter, Facebook, YouTube, will those links be restricted by, like, the SMCPS Wi-Fi domain?
As a guest?
As a guest. Because I know, like, the Twitter and Facebook pages are usually restricted to students in, during the day.
Wonderful question, Peter, thank you. So, Peter, we have, and I'll verify at Chopticon just, just so, but we've, we've unrestricted Twitter, because many principals are tweeting out things that need to be seen by students in real time. So Twitter will be completely open. YouTube has a partial opening, we do YouTube for Education, so the videos that will be in there will also be tagged under the educational domain. Channel 96 will be absolutely open. I've only skipped one up there that probably won't open because... It will, it will not. Yeah, so we, we won't have Facebook access during the day, it's just the, the liability for us is, is much too high for that. But the other three are, are with some level. YouTube is the only one that's gotten any real restriction on it, but it's the YouTube for Education channel, which keeps it to a very streamlined, it kind of takes all of YouTube and weeds out some of the stuff that we just absolutely don't want, and it keeps the good stuff in.
All right, that, that makes, that makes a lot more sense, because that's what I was thinking, because they are really great tools, but in, in order to use the tools, they have to be set a certain way.
We found that Twitter's been...
We found that Twitter's been pretty easy to keep a handle on, it's not been very invasive or have a lot of deleterious effects to our schools, so it's actually shared out a lot of good information. Mr. Hyble kind of blazed a trail early on, almost two years ago now, where he was encouraging students to follow him, so that he was posting information they were directly needing to have, and it really worked well.
And even my, me noticing, in fact, before I was student member of the Board of Education, I was actually, I think I was sent like a retweet from Dr. Materano, and when my first board meeting, I actually, I think, I believe you took a picture of me, and someone in a school system that knew me saw that on Twitter and sent me that picture. And that, that to me, was very interesting, because it just, the power of technology, and they retweeted it to other people, and, and just using it as a wonderful tool to get information out quickly. I mean, I got that picture during the meeting, actually.
Isn't that like, I mean, that just makes me, you make me smile all the time. But the other thing is, if you've, if you follow all the tweets, I've been very cognizant of who my followers are, and a number of our students are following, so I will send out SAT day, words of the day, I'll send out instructional pieces, I've got some links that I've gone on to, mathematical sites, variety of things, and say, you know, take a look at this, think about this word, just to continue that whole aspect, put a lot of quotes out there for people to think about, just a lot of really connected pieces to advance who that audience is. If I've read a book, I'll put something on there, if I've read an article, I'll link it on there, using the Bitly, the smaller website, the smaller domain name, to link people to different articles. And so people really tune into that, and what I really like is then the individuals that I follow are a lot of educational experts and then breaking news, and I'll use that and get more information. So like when the Navy Yard incident was occurring, there was a lot of TV information, but I was following the local reporters to get the accurate information, and I'll use that again during weather events, you know, to make certain we're on the accurate level of what that breaking news is, because what I've found is, is I've stated Twitter's being used by individuals in leadership positions to make those first announcements, people say, "Follow me on Twitter for the, the announcement about this." So as I've stated, I'm using that information to write that first piece of information about a school closing. Other people are using it that way too, and so you might find something out on Twitter before you find it out on the regular standard news media outlets of which we've been accustomed to. And for your generation, you know, it's, it's always being used by your generation. My kids follow me and give me feedback on, you know, things that I shouldn't probably be saying, or thinking I'm trying to be cool or something like that, "Dad, not a good use of a word that you put in there," or different things. But the other piece is some, I'm pretty excited about this, the fifth grade students at White Marsh Elementary, Mrs. Cord's class was following me on Twitter the first day of school, through their teacher, who's an active user. They were evaluating my writing to 100, because you have to, you're contained to 140 characters. They in turn were responding to my writing in 140 characters, another core standard activity, I might add, to be able to be in a succinct way to write. So their teacher gave an assignment, "Follow Dr. Materano, how would you respond to him in 140 characters to get a succinct message?" I thought that was absolutely ingenious. So lots of really nice things occurring, not just because it's a fancy social media, and I choose to use it because in many ways it's one-dimensional. Facebook, I have some challenges with as a superintendent, people wanting to be friends, you know, it's a whole different level of things, but people choose to be, find their own level of comfort. So thank you for that, and thank you, team, for this. This is so exciting in terms of innovation.
And also just one more thing, even, it kind of came to me when we were talking about this information. Last year, I was actually on a tech center field trip with the rest of my class up in the DC, and while we were on the bus coming back home to St. Marius County, we were still in Washington DC, we had, someone had gotten a tweet on the bus that Spring Ridge Middle School had caught fire, and we had all learned about this, and the entire, the entire bus was knowing, we were all talking about it. And when we got back, we, we all learned, we, we all heard about the news the next day, but when we actually came back and learned that we actually got this information, how many hours away from actual St. Marius County, within about 10 minutes of the event occurring?
That's really nice.
And with this information, having the entire community know about it, just me being, and what really hit me was I was far away from the county, not even there, and knowing that this event happened within 10 minutes.
So you see the power of it?
Yes.
Perfect.
Mrs. Cord?
Um, a politician, nobody that's sitting up here, although we are politicians, told me that, the individual told me that they were going to use the social media to run for the next election, and it's nobody here. I'm wondering how that would interfere with our policy if it was one of us, which it wasn't one of us, where it says in the policy that you may not like campaign in the boardroom or whatever. Are we gonna have to change our policy somehow, or?
No, it's like anything else. I mean, i- i- in terms of campaigning here in the boardroom, I mean, that's, that's one thing.
That's not Twitter.
No, that's not. I mean, would you choose to do setting up your own Facebook accounts? Because that by far, that is a, if you look at some of the local or the presidential election, the last presidential election was highly influenced by the social network.
Or Twitter.
Twitter, all of these things. So all of that was, was within the acceptable bounds, as you, you know, with freedom of speech and your advancement of your own political campaign.
Oh, I know about freedom of speech.
So all of that plays in, and you know, and you're ultimately, you know, responsible for what, you know, what you put out there with it. I'm very sensitive to what, I always, I said, I, it is my account as superintendent of St. Marius County Schools, but also as Mike the person, I, I'll share my opinions about the things if I'm in a basketball game, people, you want to see that other side, but I strictly understand who my audience is, but you as elected officials, that, that's more than acceptable and fits within the policy as well, as long as, you know, you're not sitting here at the board meeting and announcing your Twitter feed about it. Right, or whatever it may be, that, that still applies. And that's how we've applied a lot of this in terms of instruction, you know, the social networks. We revert back to our basic policies. How would we treat a old film strip, there's an approval process, the same way that we would approve a site, you know, for acceptable use? So we, we don't want to make these things more complicated in what they need to do.
No, but everything gets complicated whenever you add something to it.
But you know, people in terms of advancing their own political campaigns, I think that's just part of the, the way people campaign now.
Well, there's no way you can stop it.
Yeah, so, no, no, you, you don't, and, and your policies are, you know, allow you to do that. I mean, it's a campaigning tool that you set up on your own, so that's not a problem. It's just how, if you came in and you had placards and you put them in front of you during a board meeting, that would be an issue.
Or handed out pen.
Yeah, I mean, that's a whole different issue. So I, I think that you, you have to go back and make the comparison, how would that compare to what was done before and how things would be challenged, and it's no different. I've become very comfortable with it. Our next great move as a system needs to be, is we advance this rapidly, a lot of these issues, and I thought you were gonna go there, Peter, was, I know we had the discussion before, when we want to have students using their own devices, there's certain times they shouldn't be using them for, you know, for a variety of reasons, we talked about social bullying and cyberbullying and things such as that, but once we bring in a device of a child, their own device, there's no security walls, you know, around that, and how do we address that from that aspect? So we're in the process, Mr. Korn's and Ms. Greer are in the process of developing two policies that will be advanced for you regarding using personal devices and these kind of things. And we have to be open and receptive that things are changing. That's part of this, the beauty of this school system, it is highly progressive and highly innovative, but also being concerned about the policies, but developing the policies in a way that doesn't limit innovation and the proper use of things. We're very much in that level, as opposed to no outright. So very good conversation spawned from this discussion this evening.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Great job, guys, keep up the good work.
Yeah, very, very.
Thank you very much.
Very, very.
Mrs. Washington?
As I said, the Norman education is changed, and we are raising the bar and we're meeting the standards, thank you very much. And you already answered my question, which is, will this cause any policy revisions and updates or any new policies? So you answered that question in your comment.
Yeah, and as board members, that's one of your main roles, is policy approval and development, and if there's anything that causes you any form of, you know, concern, consternation around any of this or attention, bring that up in this forum so that I can look at those policies. We try to have our staff always advise us in our thought process, but if the things are shifting and you're talking to other board members, ask about that so that we're always clear what we need to do as well, and we're in the acceptable bounds. And I think we are, I'm just a little concerned about the use of personal devices right now, that's our biggest piece of concern.
Okay, Mrs. Allen?
When we brought the superintendent in and hired him, we made it clear that communications and improving communication significantly was one of our top priorities. I know when I reached out to the superintendent and to the board not long ago and said, "Why aren't we streaming our board meetings for people who don't have the opportunity to see it, don't have the access?" There was, I could almost feel the pause that came through, and he said, you know, "I just don't know that that's a place we want to go." And I was like, "Why not? It's important for people to be able to understand, at least have access to." So I'm thrilled that you have found a way to make this happen, because I do think it's really important. The, when you showed the, the Facebook page that will be available, I recently learned that, and I, one of the reasons we have not, we don't have access to Facebook is the, all of the comments that can be posted and trying to monitor that, but I was told that there is a way of, of having a Facebook page that does not allow, it allows information to go out, but doesn't allow people to post comments. What will ours be? Because I noticed that there was at least one that popped up that said, "Comment."
Yes. The way Facebook sets up their accounts, on a personal user account, you can disable commenting on particular post or on all posts. Unfortunately, the way that they do pages for organization, they consider it to be a key feature of Facebook to allow comments, and they also allow users to post their own post on your page. Now that has been disabled. Users can't post their own topics of discussion on the, the page. But I've taken it a step further and created a filter that actually disables comments manually. So it, when a user puts in a comment, they'll see that they've made a comment, but the comments are automatically hidden, and then our administrators can look at them and decide whether they want to reveal them or not reveal them.
And, and let me explain that. I mean, let me, let me clarify what, what Mrs. Allen just said, I mean, I, when, when she was just talking about the conversation she had with me about this, it was more in line with capacity of staff.
Yes, absolutely.
It wasn't in terms of my resistance. I want, we want to do these things.
Right.
And it does come back to that issue regarding our capacity as staff.
Yes.
My conversations with superintendents was when they have an active Facebook with comments, you know we're very responsive as a district. It's another venue for people to communicate with us, and I feel obligated to respond. I don't necessarily have anybody designated to follow our Facebook account and to now filter information out. So it's strictly a capacity issue?
Yes.
That we need to have that conversation during the budget cycle about advancing the positions necessary to keep that communication peace. So I, I, one of our cardinal rules around here is if somebody communicates with us, you can expect a response. I do not want to be criticized at a board meeting or somebody coming up to the podium saying, "We sent you a message on Facebook and you didn't respond." I, I'm not checking the Facebook account, there's only so many hours in a day to review social media. You can be spending your, you see some of our young people spend their whole day on these. So the conversation is wonderful to have, but the other thing is, I'm gonna be very selective, we may want to put on the website, the Facebook account, "The school system calendar is now open for public review. It's now for public hearing. Pay, post your comments on here."
Right.
It's another way to get more input for public comment, but it's a limited time, and the individuals responsible for that policy will know to check that as well as the emails, as well as the phone calls, as they're expected to do in those traditional ways. So we're gonna go a little bit slow to go fast on this one, but we've tipped our toe into this, but we've had to limit the comments because I really don't want to take on the fact of offending a community member for not responding, because I have not assigned somebody, we don't have the capacity as staff to monitor our Facebook account every day. We have so many things that we are monitoring with our board account, our emails, our phone calls, on and on and on and on, and I feel that we've got to go slow to go fast on this one and be selective when we open it up for a particular posting about a feedback on a policy or something. So that's where we all are on it, but we've just taken a big hurdle to go to this level. And I hope board members are pleased with this hurdle that we're going over, and we're gonna manage it, but I'm also gonna, as your responsible superintendent, I'm gonna let you know where our tipping point is in terms of capacity. We're pushing people, and just by virtue of Mr. Smith saying we brought these three individuals together, this is a huge, big undertaking. These are smart guys who get it and made this happen, and I about fell out because I couldn't believe that we were able to do it that quickly using, just by having the knowledge that you all had about the YouTube channel. And if, I think something you glossed over, Barrett, I know we're trying, I'm being very conversational about this tonight, but it's important for this community to understand. The piece that we glossed over, and maybe you did say it, is you can sign up.
Right, you can subscribe to the channel.
To subscribe, and anytime, so let's emphasize that again, you can subscribe, and when you do, when we make a new post, then you'll get an email.
Right.
To visit our website, and already, I don't know who all those hits are that have viewed my interview with Peter, who was, it was a wonderful interview, check that over the holiday, where we talked about bullying, et cetera. Have you seen it yet?
Yes.
Yeah, very good. But we're going to act, I think we're gonna see those, count of those views even more so when we do this.
Well, they all feed into each other, that's the other great thing, is when we post a video, we can also post on the Twitter that a new video is up, we can also embed that video into the Facebook page, so they can view it from there. So all these things will kind of merge together.
Well, I'm also excited because Dr. Lowry, last night when I was talking with her, and we were, we were discussing the idea of people not understanding what good teaching to the, with the new curriculum is, that they're in the process of developing videos of teachers doing lessons that people can see, and they're hoping that, that we will then repost those, and this is tailor-made for that.
What an incredible vehicle for it, because the way YouTube works is you watch a video and it says, "If you like that video, then you like this video." And so within our channel itself, it'll draw people through all of the media that we're creating, because, I mean, we're creating some fantastic video segments, Mary Ann Williams working with superintendent, there's really, they're just incredible resources, and we need to make sure that people are, are seeing.
Well, Barrett and Jason and Mary Ann, thank you very much.
And Jim.
And Scott.
And absolutely, because you have really given life to what we strongly believe in and, and what we have been going after for a very long time, and you had the skill to make it happen. We, we knew what we wanted, and so glad that you, that you produced it and produced it so quickly. Very well done, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen.
I'll stick to the world of that, it's wonderful.
Communicate, 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 and then communicate, communicate some more, right?
Right.
And that's what we've been saying.
We're gonna change it. Communicate, tweet, communicate, tweet.
This is fantastic. All these exciting things that are happening, you know, excitement, excitement, and more excitement.
And $10,000 from my part.
And $10,000, more excitement.
That's still just blows my mind.
Guys, thanks a million. There's no question where this is going, how it will be used, and thank you for taking the time and having the patience to put all this together. Okay, board members, that brings us down to future board meetings.